Going to executive session to discuss 2.1 legal matter district, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 personnel matter, 2.4 district matter.
Second?
All in favor? Oh, the time works the time.
It's 6:56 and a date. And today's date is Tuesday, December 12.
December 12. Let you go nowhere without your phone. So we called to order our meeting at 6:56 PM. We went into executive session to discuss 2.1 legal matter district, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 personnel matter teacher tenure, and 2.4 district matter succession. Oh, didn't do that. So can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and every being individual.
Entering into public session at 7:46 PM. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. We have a revision for our agenda. 5.1 revisions, if I'm not mistaken. Or revisions?
No revisions.
No revisions. So can I have a motion to...
I'll take off 2.4.
Oh, yeah, we do have a revision. Taking off 2.4 district matter from exec. Succession plan. Second? All in favor? Motion carries. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Wait, wait. Consent agenda personnel, consent agenda special services, and consent agenda for business? All in favor? Special report number one.
Yay! Now the fun begins. Thank you, Mia. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing our students. We have cum laude recipients, national merit commended students, and national merit semifinalists. So congratulations for getting to this point and getting here. And I'm sorry we had to... Mia, you're not boring. But I'm sorry we had to bore you with the standard of board meetings and the things that have to take place. Those are legitimate concerns for us, so we are sure to carry them out the way we're supposed to. Just like we have to do this kind of work, you've done some work that has made us very proud of you tonight, which is why we asked you to come here and be recognized not only by the superintendent and district office administrators and the Board of Education, but also for your parents and maybe any grandparents or aunts, uncles, siblings who might be in the audience tonight. This is pretty spectacular, you coming here. You go to school every day, you have friends, you have people that you're acquainted with in your classes, you have tests that you're taking all the time. There are those things, just like board processes and procedures, that you had to do in your high school career in order to get you here. But it is not just success in those things that got you here. It isn't just checking boxes of doing well on this, that, or the other thing. You've really distinguished yourselves in other ways. And I like to think of this as you having a passion and a drive to do something for you. Your passion and drive makes you a consummate learner. And a consummate learner is the success that you've achieved tonight. Yes, you've scored so well. If you are one of the seven... How many? Cum laude, 18? How many are you? Let me know. 18? 18. You might be one of the 18 seniors who were honored for your academic achievement in the top 10% of your class, and we get to celebrate you tonight. You had outstanding scholarship. To perform in the top 10% of your class in a highly competitive high school in this country is no small feat. You didn't get there by just checking boxes. You got there by understanding what you were learning, embracing what you were learning, enjoying what you were learning, pursuing what you were interested in, right? And that, I think, is the difference. Anyone can really check boxes. But to get here, you have to be someone else, and you've proven that. Sandy Abt at the Cum Laude Society Reception for parents who were there, she spoke about the organization founded in 1906 honoring academic achievement in secondary schools. We are one of the 382... There are 382 chapters in private schools and several other countries. And the distinguished aspect to that organization that you're a part of. But above everything else, I think, when I think about myself as a superintendent and anyone at this table and anybody out here who knows me will say, "I love my job." This isn't... I don't go to work and check boxes every day. I don't just try to be the best at this, that, or the other thing. I do what's best for me and everyone else in something I really love doing. And I hope that this success that you have, and I really do think it has been, a labor of love. And that when you go on for the rest of your lives and you find that one thing that you're going to spend a majority of your time doing, you did it because you experimented so deeply in everything else that you were working on. I don't know if you know this, but there are a lot of students who don't have what you have. They don't get that love of their work and a passion for what they're learning and doing and the people they're doing it with. And that, to me, is a void existence, right? When you can't be passionate about what you love. So I see in you something that I probably learned in my 40s or 50s, and I'm just really proud of you for getting there now at this stage in your lives. And I can't imagine what kind of adults you're... Well, you are adults, but, you know, bigger adults. You're going to be one day. We also have our national merit commended students, representing top 4% of students. Our national merit scholarship program takes from about 1.3 million juniors who took the PSATs. And you are in the top 4% of those juniors. National merit semifinalists, right? Approximately 16,000 students were semifinalists in the country, and our students are distinguished in a group in the top 1% of high school seniors. How do you even do that? I just want you to know that I didn't do that when I was your age. It's taken me a long time to get three masters and a doctorate, and I still don't know as much as you do about life. So congratulations to you. These are distinctions that come because of your passion and your interest, but it also comes at the hands of your parents, your siblings, who might annoy you sometimes, but really are here for your better good, and the rest of your families. They've supported you through that. They've said, "I'm sure there are nights that they wanted you just to go to sleep." There are times that they said, "Why do you have to do all of this? Why don't you measure yourself?" But you had a drive and a passion to do it all. And in that, you found yourselves. And you found that you are a person who loves to learn. And in Byram Hills, that's our saying, right? We are lifelong learners. So thank you for modeling the way for everyone, for inspiring everybody who's here at this table to do work, the Board of Education especially, for free on behalf of our children and our district and our students. You make us all really proud. And I know, especially from knowing some of you pretty closely, that you did this because it is a labor of love for you. So congratulations for that. That's something that some people don't achieve in their lifetimes. So we are here tonight to celebrate you. I am going to turn it over to...
You two want to come up here?
Yes. We're figuring ourselves out, see? We are going to come over to greet you, Mia Di Pietro and I. And Tim is going to call out your names. And I think he was over there giving you directions about how to walk and how to line up, right? You want your parents to be able to take great pictures.
We'll have a photo op at the end as they're behind the board.
Can we have to talk into the mic?
Hello.
What are they doing?
I'm going to call their names.
They're going to be behind?
You're going to walk up, shake your hands.
Yes, and go behind. You can shake our hands if you want. You can, you know, give a fist bump or an elbow, whatever you're more comfortable with. You know, we are close.
I'll call them up. You can snap a photo. We'll take a pause at the end, and you can take pictures with them standing up here at the end. Aiden is going to lead the way, so we'll start with Aiden, Aldea Lustig, cum laude and national merit commended. And Cyrus Ali, national merit semifinalist. Ayaka Aman, cum laude. Lily Anchen, cum laude and national merit commended. Drew Annixstein, national merit commended. Javier Benaroff, national merit commended. Samara Brown, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Calvin Kai, national merit commended. Jack Kanter, cum laude. Lucas Kanter, national merit commended. Carissa Chung, national merit commended. Benjamin Curley, national merit commended. Jacob Fenster, cum laude and national merit commended. Zachary Goldman, national merit commended. Charlie Jacobs, national merit commended. Isabella Jacobs, national merit commended. Erica Cartoonin, cum laude. Erin Lipowski, national merit commended. Erin Lesz, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Benjamin Levy, cum laude. Grace Lynn, cum laude and national merit commended. Jonathan Manowitz, cum laude and national merit commended. Daniel Dosai, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Joseph Palakal, cum laude and national merit commended. Gregory Perrin, national merit commended. Zachary Pero, cum laude and national merit commended. Andrew Pedeluk, national merit commended. Andrew... Margaret Pollack, cum laude. John Quinn, cum laude. Jake Santos, cum laude and national merit commended. Alexander Woodworth, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. And Yi Chang Yang, a national merit semifinalist. And there were two faculty inductees that I'd like to announce. Ms. Heather Menrique, science teacher, and Ms. Lisa Pellegrino, mathematics champion. So congratulations to the students. We'll let Dr. Lamia, Ms. Di Pietro sit down, and you can take some photos.
What you can say in the stand, right behind us. Come closer. Do I have to be your mother? Everybody's face? And fantastic handshakes. Parents have been involved in handshake lessons. Thank you so much, everyone.
While they're walking off, I'm going to just say a bit. Quick little word. As a lot of you know, I have a child in this grade. So I've watched some of these kids grow up since some of them were in kindergarten. And this is just, you know, I feel as if one of mine is up there. I feel very proud of you guys. And I think there's sometimes a tendency to play down how hard you guys work. And, you know, tell people, "Oh, no." They act as if it comes easily. And, you know, that's not true. We know you guys work very, very hard to get where you've gotten today. It's incredible. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Been...
That's great.
We also know that you could have been anywhere else tonight, and you graced us by coming here. We want to thank you for that. And it's a small reward, but there are fantastic cookies right outside the door to the left. I encourage you to take some home with you and go enjoy some treats with your families. And we'll recess to give parents and family members time to celebrate you. Thank you.
Number 10, special report, curriculum conversation with Dr. Jen Layden.
Jen, are you doing any introduction? Want me to just jump in?
Oh, jump in.
Okay. Let me just skip... Okay, so my mic. So thank you. So tonight, we're having a curriculum conversation with our social studies chairperson, Dr. Jen Layden. So welcome, Jen. The board might recall, before the pandemic, we started doing state-of-the-department curriculum conversations. So I was rotating through the various academic departments, and we would bring in the administrators to come talk about the work that they're doing in their buildings, the focus of the departments, the initiatives that they're working on, and let us have a conversation with the community about that work so we can go deeply into the specific areas of focus. So in October, all of our administrators come and present on our goals for the year. So we had an opportunity to have sort of a high-level conversation. So this is an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper and explore where the department has come over the past five to seven years. So that's what tonight's conversation will be. Jen, if I recall, I believe the social studies, new social studies frameworks from the State Education Department are about eight years old now, I believe.
Yes.
So New York State has been revising all of the academic standards and put out Social Studies Framework eight years ago. So since that time, we've been working to make sense of those standards and interpret them into the impact it has on students. And they are now, the state is now phasing in the new assessments aligned to those new standards. So Jen, we'll talk about that work, and you're going to see that in action tonight. So with that, let me just introduce Dr. Layden. So thank you for being here. And I'm going to turn it over to you. The board certainly jump in and ask questions. Jen has some slides to focus us a little bit and walk us through, but certainly if anything comes to mind about what is on your mind regarding the curriculum. Let me remind our community that our social studies chairpeople oversee grades six through 12. So it's middle school and high school social studies curriculum. So with that, Jen, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to pause every once in a while and look to see if you have any questions. So we've entitled this State of the Department as "Developing Expert Citizens", which has really been the focus of our work over the past couple of years. So I want to talk to you a bit about what we've been doing and why and sort of how it's been evolving over time, and then provide you some examples of what it looks like in the classroom. So, you know, we always start with the district mission. And that's, you know, what frames our work and what really drives us going forward. And a few years ago, Tim and Jen challenged us to develop additionally a department purpose. And it was a great exercise because it really made us stop and reflect about why do we do what we do? What's significant about it? And how does it align to the district mission? So if you can see on the slide over there, we, as a group collectively, six to 12, determined that our purpose is through a study and analysis of the past and present, our department prepares students to think like historians by critically analyzing content through the evaluation of multiple perspectives and sources in order to create informed, active, empathetic citizens and decision-makers. And creating that purpose had a lot of power for us because when we think about decisions going forward, whether it be a new course that we want to offer or new resources that we want to explore, we go back to the purpose. To what extent does it align with our purpose and support our purpose? And sort of that framing idea really sort of drives our work. The other thing that's happened recently, which I know you're familiar with, is the Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures. And that study really helped solidify some of our thinking as well and supported it. You know, anything from the characteristics of a graduate that they have identified really aligned well, again, with our purpose as a department. But even more specifically, the commission spoke about this idea of having seals on the... An endorsement on the diploma. And that specifically relates to some of our work in social studies, which I'll talk more about in detail in a moment. But also this idea that they highlighted about civic responsibility. And if we think about why social studies, the most important thing we do is educate students so that they can participate in our democracy. And so that was great to sort of see that reinforced by the commission. So quickly, I want to step back a few years to review, and then I'll kind of go forward. So I think the board knows this, but just to review and for the community, that social studies teaching and learning has really changed, you know, in recent years, particularly since we all were in school. We know that traditionally, social studies was about knowing a lot of stuff and memorizing a lot of stuff. But really, the evolution has gone beyond the acquisition of factual knowledge. And it's much more about utilizing historical thinking skills to analyze those events of the past and help us understand the world today. So as that field has been evolving, of course, teaching and learning, you know, has to evolve with it. And we really feel makes a much more engaging curriculum and classroom environment. So that big change has influenced us quite a bit. And that... Yes?
Can I just ask you if that means that content knowledge is de-emphasized or that it's unimportant?
Well, no, but the content knowledge, you use it, you demonstrate it through the use of your skills. So you actually have to understand the content, but the way that we measure it is through applying the skills to the content, rather than just content in isolation. And the assessments, no surprise, are changed along with that. So, you know, this slide is just a quick review for you. But the big focus is this idea of conceptual understanding. One of the big ideas that we need to understand about history in particular, and how do those historical thinking skills help us interpret that? So the frameworks that Tim mentioned were rewritten to emphasize that. And additionally, the College Board rewrote their standards as well. So this is a movement sort of state and national to look at that big idea of history as well as historical thinking. We had new exams in global history in 2018 for the first time. And then COVID came around and sort of put a brake on things. So we had a couple of years without exams. But last year, we had the US History Regents for the first time. And in many ways, these assessments are very well-aligned with each other. The big difference from years past is that all of the questions have some sort of a stimulus or source or chart or political cartoon in which students have to interact with using those historical thinking skills to demonstrate their understanding. So it's not content knowledge in isolation. It's application of content through sources. And that's what historians do.
I see these assessments are focused at the secondary level or high school level. Do you focus this work also at the middle school?
Sure. Everything we do is six to 12. And that's been sort of the real focus of our work. What we did with the new frameworks and assessments is, as a department, we said, you know, if historical thinking is the driving force, we need to be consistent in how we communicate that to students starting in the sixth grade. So we put together common language around historical thinking skills. And so we have four big areas of historical thinking. And so students see this language, they see the poster, starting in sixth grade, and carrying all the way through. So they know that they're in training to be a good historian. What does that look like? What are the skills? And so that we can be sort of consistent in how we practice it with kids all the way through. And how they're assessed as well. So that was the focus of our work for probably the past seven to eight years. It continues, really thinking about honing students' skills to be more sophisticated. We really feel that all of the information that students consume, you know, on social media, in the news, everything is some sort of a source that they really need to look at critically. So we feel that our work is really helping students understand their world just as much as the past. I remember when we first started this work, some of the sixth-grade teachers, we used to use the word "corroborate your sources." And they would say, "That's a really hard word. I'm not sure sixth graders can handle it." And I said, "Just try it, just try it." A few months later, I was visiting a class, and the kids couldn't stop using the word "corroborate," you know? "I'm going to need to go home and corroborate that or corroborate this." And, you know, once you sort of use the language, it becomes yours. So that's really been a big focus.
Jen, if you can go back to the previous slide a moment of that framework, would you say there was one area that is the most challenging with teachers and students to get kids thinking in that mindset?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, most challenging, but perhaps most important and needs the most practice is really looking to determine what is the point of view of a source? What is the purpose of a source? How do you weigh reliability of a source? You know, sometimes it's very obvious, but it's the cases that are more subtle that require more thinking. So I think that's something that we've really honed in on and practiced it at, you know, the appropriate grade level throughout.
Jen, so social studies and history just generally over the last, like, few years has probably gotten... That's okay. Social studies and history over the last few years, it's probably gotten the most attention from parents and from just, you know, various news articles writing stories about curriculum. And I guess the question is, with all of that backdrop and the curriculum ultimately that you use, whether it's in Regents classes or in AP classes, how do you sort of scrub it to make sure that they're balanced sources? And that ultimately, they don't have like a strong ideological, you know, sort of tint from one side or the other? But balanced sources, where to your point, when you go back to source material, that's a great way of doing it, because then you're going back to actual documentation from history. But what kind of like process do you go through just to try to think about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it really is the idea that if you're doing the work of a historian, you're looking at multiple points of view in order to determine what's occurred. So that's where you start. And so often, when we examine something, you know, whether it's in the, you know, distant past or more recent, you have to start with that. So what are the viewpoints of that particular event from different people? You know, from maybe different social classes, from different political leanings, from different levels of power in society. So if you use that as your frame and you're open to looking at those different points of view, that's really the work of history. It's not necessarily telling a narrative. You know, there are big conceptual understandings that historians agree on that we look at, but the work is really getting into the sources to see how did different... but the work is really getting into the sources to see how did different people view different events and why? And that's kind of the work we do.
I was with a group of sophomores and seniors today. They were talking about when they're having disagreements with friends, they try to remember to go back to the documents. They actually use that inside of their history class ads where they learned to do that. So that, you know, it's not just about saying what you think or feel about something, but let's go back and look at this document and talk about it. And also pausing to listen to the other side.
Yeah.
So I think they're picking up some of those skills from the things we're doing in the classroom to help students be able to have those types of discussions.
Absolutely. And, you know, really when we're talking about history too, it's always referring to, well, where, whose point of view are you explaining, you know? And particularly if you're explaining one point of view, always to being able to show, well, there was another point of view and, and here it was. But sort of naming that point of view like you would name a source, I think is really an important practice. Okay? So that's again, been a lot of the work. And then in recent years, just really the past couple, we really have shifted and added a focus on being civic ready. I mean, we all know the importance of people participating in our government, whether it be voting, community involvement, volunteering, that's what really makes a democracy thrive. And, you know, what is our responsibility as a school district to help students have those skills to be civically ready and to participate? So, so that's been where we've looked most recently. And what's been sort of exciting is that the state has said, this is really important too. And they have developed a seal of civic readiness. So currently, there are two diploma seals, and this is one of them. And it's a formal recognition that students have earned this high level of proficiency in civic knowledge and mindset and skills. And it's, you know, it, the purpose of it is to demonstrate that our students have reached that high level and to communicate that they're ready to participate. So for the first time this year, our students were eligible to earn that diploma seal.
Yeah, every year, districts must apply to be able to administer the seal. So you, you give your application, which includes your plan of how you're going to monitor this and the opportunities you're giving students to earn the seal. And then the state will. We did get approved, we did submit that this year. And so we do have the ability to give the seal this year.
Yeah. So, so we're off and running. Here's just a little bit about the particulars. So in order to earn the seal, you have to get a total of six points. And at least two of the points need to be in what they're calling civic knowledge. And that can be anything from doing well in a Regents exam or taking an AP course or even just passing all of your social studies classes. So that's sort of, you know, saying, I have the requisite knowledge. And then on the other side, you have to have at least two points in civic participation. So these are more active things. And they could be anything from actual civic projects to community service, to work experience, to participating in elective courses. And there's even an opportunity to learn, earn a point in middle school as well, which I'll, I'll show you how we did it in Byron Hills. We started it last year. So there's lots of ways to get there and it's not just one type of student that could earn the seal. I think it's really, if, if you've sort of demonstrated that you're involved and you've participated in your community in a variety of ways, you can, that you can earn that seal.
Jen, I see that one of the credits is through extracurricular or outside activities. Do we have opportunities for students to participate in civic readiness through our extracurricular program?
Yeah, I mean, tons. I mean, you all know that there's so many awesome, amazing clubs. And what students need to do for that particular one is sort of identify their work, how it relates to civics, and they write a reflection as well. So some of the clubs that we have, we have like Fuller Builders Club that goes out to build houses. We have our Unified Sports Program, you know, that helps, works with students with special needs. I mean, almost any club you could think about that is in some way sort of reaching out to improve their community could be something that would be eligible for that piece.
How do students find out?
About this. So we started last year in the spring by visiting all of the 11th grade social studies classes. And their first actually opportunity to earn a sort of grade level specific point was in 11th grade last year. So there was a common assessment that students all did at the end of 11th grade. And so by completing that, they could actually earn some of their points. And then we also sent out information at the end of the summer. Chris and I put together a video to explain it and, you know, went again back into social studies classes. What we decided to do was, we made three different deadlines to have it, to apply for the seal because we thought, well, some students are going to have all the points by the beginning of their senior year and they might want to put it on their transcript and apply early to college. So the first opportunity to apply was at the end of September. And then we know, well, some students might need a little bit more time and sort of finish up things. And so we did a second round December 1st. And then there might be some students who actually need all of senior year to finish their coursework. And so the third opportunity would be at the end of the school year. So as the students applied and earned it, it was added to their transcript. So we thought that would, we really wanted to help students because they're something we're proud of, but we want to make sure they get it in a way that could make a difference for them. So one of the things we had to do as a department is really think about, what does that mean if we're teaching civics? I mean, we know the content, right? We want them to understand how government works and, you know, the different responsibilities of voting and things like that. But we know also that there's probably a lot more to it. And so what we started this year was, we looked at a particular article that actually Jen Mamiya sent my way. And I was looking at it over the summer and I said, this is really, could be a way to help us think through this. This particular article was a summary of some research done where they, researchers looked at what do expert citizens actually do? Like what is, what does it look like if you're an expert citizen? And so they interviewed 100 experts in civics, you know, scholars and things like that. But then they also interviewed over 500, what they called ordinary citizens, but those are folks who actually are very engaged in the work of being a citizen and are, you know, doing sort of that work. And what they found through that research is identifiable tasks that skilled citizens do. And so we looked at these tasks and we said, where does this live in the curriculum? So you can see on, on the screen on the left-hand side, the first bucket probably doesn't surprise us, politically engaged activities. You know, anything from being involved in a campaign or advocating for an issue or preparing to vote. You know, those are sort of some of the traditional things we think that a citizen does. But the research added some other things that maybe we don't always think of. So the second big bucket being building an informed community. So it's not just about sort of engaging these activities, but what is the work that you do in order to participate? So what is the reading that you do? How do you get other community members sort of involved? How do you share that information that you've learned? Is it social media? Is it another group? So that is another thing that skilled citizens do. They're active in learning and sharing that information.
Is part of that media literacy?
Yes, absolutely. Right? Because you're interacting with that media. How do you, how do you share it in a way or think about it in a way that's going to be clear to those that you want to sort of share your ideas?
Well, I guess I was thinking the opposite, which is like if you're looking at a source document, how do you know it's legitimate?
Exactly, exactly as well, both ways, right? And then the other two buckets talk about, excuse me, this idea of informal ties, which was kind of interesting. And I, I think, you know, if you think about some of the work you do in the Board of Education, it's about how do we sort of bring different cultures and community members together around common ideas? You know, how do we get people to think about building consensus, building community, collaborating in order to help people understand what we want to achieve for our community? And then the last one is volunteering. You know, what does that look like in terms of actually doing the work in our community, advocating, helping particularly those less fortunate? And so those sort of four big areas were really interesting to look at in terms of, well, this is what citizens do. So if this is what citizens do, what should the curriculum look like to build those habits and those skills in our six to 12 area? And so the first thing we did was we said, we looked at all of the things that we do currently and we tried to align them to these particular tasks. So where does it live? Do we have examples of when we're doing these variety of things? We did it in the actual classroom curriculum, but even we looked beyond that because so many of the teachers are involved in extracurricular activities, coaching sports, and all of these other things where a lot of this sort of civic skills live as well. So we did a big look at where we are. We were happy to see that, yes, we are doing a lot of those things. Of course, we're working on problem solving, consensus building, collaboration. But what, when we stepped back to reflect on it, what we noticed was, we never really communicated to kids that the reason, one of the reasons we're doing that is because you're going to become a skilled citizen as a result. And so our big sort of aha was if we really want students to understand that these are the skills of a citizen, we've got to be more deliberate in our communication. So they understand that this is what citizens do and by practicing these skills, you're going to be ready, you're going to be more honed in that work.
It was like what you did with historical thinking skills, is you named it.
We named it, yeah.
And you are able to label it, kids can use words associated with it. So you're doing the same thing with citizenship.
Yeah. Okay. So what does it look like in the classroom? So I have some examples, starting with the sixth grade. So we have some, we have a really nice partnership that we've developed between the students and global scholars and the sixth grade students. And what the students and global scholars do in the year one program is they produce a public service announcement about the different UN Sustainable Development Goals. And then that public service announcement is used as a learning resource in the sixth grade classroom. So the sixth graders view those public service announcements as one of their resources to learn about the SDGs. And what they then do is decide which one of them is most important, you know, to them as an individual, and they write a paragraph about it. Well, then those paragraphs get sent back to the global scholar students who offer them feedback on, on that paragraph to improve their work. And then students respond to that feedback and they publish those paragraphs along with some visual maps of the design on a website. And that website is then shared with family and friends. And really this idea being that it's, things should go beyond sort of handed into the teacher. If you're really working on citizenship, it's about getting the work out to others, somebody who could use that information. And so that's kind of one example where the sixth graders are already sort of practicing those skills about sharing their thinking and asking others to think about it as well. Okay, so that was one example. We had one new one this year, which, which was really interesting and exciting. The teachers really sort of said, you know what? If we think about where most government work takes place, it's done by volunteers. Most people who work for the government are not paid. Most people are volunteering their own time because they care and they want to make a difference. So the teachers designed a unit around local volunteerism. And they looked at the town of North Castle and they said, this town is run by volunteers, by boards and commissions and people who have said, it's worth my time to be engaged in this work because I want my community to be better. And so what the students did is they studied the variety of boards and commissions, they viewed some videos from volunteers, Scott was one of the stars of the videos, to share what, why do you do this work? And, you know, why, what does it mean to be a citizen? So the students looked at all of that and really with this lens of, well, what does it mean to be an active citizen? Here are my models, here are my examples. And then they went as far as then to write a thank you note. There's an example on the right there. To board members and commission members to tell them that they appreciated their work, what they had learned about their work, and really what they learned about being an active citizen. So that was really a great way to sort of take that bigger idea of being a citizen and make it very tangible on their local environment. So that was fun. Another example in seventh grade, which we've been doing for a number of years, but we've sort of honed it, is a collaboration between students in AP Government who are 12th graders and seventh graders. And they've been working on learning how bills are written and passed in the Congress. The high school students go over to the middle school, they help the students learn how to write a bill, they work in committees with them, they help them edit them. And ultimately, the students, we have a mock Congress of sorts where students then propose and vote on their bills. And then this year, we took it a step further because again, we want things to go beyond the classroom. And so the students then wrote a letter to a, one of their officials, their government officials advocating for the bill that they cared about the most. And I think a number of students picked our local congressman, Mike Lauer, as the person that they wrote to. And they each wrote a formal letter, they even learned how to address envelopes, which is an important skill, they don't do too much. But there's a link on the, this slide here. Can you open it for me, Tim? See where it says sample there? So you can just see, here's just a sample of one of the students' letters that they wrote to Representative Lauer. I think this was a student who was concerned about flavored nicotine. And they wanted to have that banned because they thought that was dangerous. So I mean, pretty sophisticated, you know, writing in terms of learning how to write a formal letter, but using evidence to support your point of view. And then they all got mailed and we got quite a few letters back from, particularly from Representative Lauer. So that was very exciting.
Not just more letters?
No, real letters. Yeah, yeah. So.
I like the use of the facts in there. It studies that shown that 84.9% of youth nicotine users use flavored nicotine.
Yeah. And that's what they had learned in the bill writing process, that they had to include evidence to support their bill. So they were able to sort of take that experience and then apply it. So that's one example.
Jen, I noticed several of the examples you're sharing show partnerships between the high school students and the middle school students. And how do middle school students respond to that?
Oh, you can imagine, they love it. They really love it. They loved it. But I would say the high school students like, love it just as much. You know, it was, I remember visiting last year when they were, the 12th graders and the seventh graders were working together. And just to see the level of engagement that, you know, the 12th graders were, there was like this instant community built where they were, you know, the students really sharing what they were thinking and the 12th graders did such a great job of just honoring their work and sort of treating them like their colleagues of sorts. And it was, it was really an impressive thing to see. And the teachers, the seventh grade and AP Gov teachers do such a great job sort of working in tandem together. They, it's their favorite time of the year, they really love it. So it's been super fun. In eighth grade, remember I mentioned you could get a point on the seal in eighth grade? So last year, we did it for the first time. What the students do during the progressive unit is inspired by the muckrakers that they learn about, is they pick an issue that they feel needs sort of attention and recognition and do a lot of research, look at multiple perspectives and write an editorial. And again, with our theme of authentic outside of the classroom audience, they sub- And again, with our theme of authentic outside of the classroom audience, they submit the editorials to the New York Times editorial contest. And in addition, they also write a reflection as part of earning that, it's called the Middle School Capstone Project. So one of the things was fun is, I heard this from Lily Van Zantin, who's one of our 8th grade teachers. I did a little video sort of introducing the civic readiness seal to the 8th graders and telling them that an opportunity to earn a point. And Lily said, the kids were pumped. They were really excited about, you know, sort of seeing that their work in 8th grade would have an impact on their high school diploma. And they were so pumped that 171 8th graders earned that point for the, for the seal. You know, so they really followed through at a, at a high level. And that was really exciting. There's a couple of examples on the slide, you know, I don't know if you have to look at them now, but you know, if you wanted to, you can go back and look, you can see what an editorial looked like, as well as a student reflection.
I love that because there seems to be... Hold on, yeah. It could just be my child, but there seems to be an attitude that middle school doesn't count because it doesn't go to GPA.
Yeah.
So nothing counts until you get to high school. So I love that they're...
Exactly.
I love that they are starting to understand that, you know, there's a buildup and...
Yes.
The little steps matter, and you're earning steps before high school too.
Yeah. And really, the work of the, the middle school too, in that sixth and 7th grade project is sort of the warm up and the practice. So, so they're really even doing it in 6th grade, and the 6th grade teachers tell them about the diploma seal too. So they're, they're getting jazzed and ready, you know, even as early as 6th grade. So there, yeah, there's that example. This student was interested in geoengineering. Yeah, so some pretty high level stuff. And they can pick, again, what they were passionate about. So there was, you know, the sky was sort of the limit. And then, and then there's the copy of the reflection, which is modeled on a reflection that they would have to write in high school. So sort of practicing those skills of identifying what I learned in terms of content, but also skills, and also what I might do next. So sort of thinking that, you know, don't think of this work as sort of one and done. If this is something you care about, how much you continue it, how much, how much you carry it forward. Okay? And then one last example, oh no, I have two more examples. This is now, we're jumping to 11th grade. So I mentioned it earlier that the 11th graders had a common assessment, I don't know if you remember, but we had the Regents early last year, it was like June 1st or so. And so we took advantage of that opportunity because we had about two weeks or so of school after the Regents exam. So we did a common assessment that helps students earn some points for the civic readiness. And the students also looked at a local issue. So they looked at a local issue in our community that they felt, again, needed attention. They did research, they looked at, you know, which board or organization would, would deal with that issue. And then they made a compelling argument about what should be done. And what the students did is they recorded like a video pitch, and then they sent that to the different boards and organizations sort of advocating for their position. And as well as writing a reflection. So students who were successful in sort of those two pieces will able to learn, I believe it was 1.5 points that they could apply to the seal in the fall. So a number of students did that as well. Here's my last example. So one of the big areas you can learn, earn points is called a capstone project. You can earn four points. So if you do this, you're in pretty good shape because you only need six. But we have a big focus in the Global Scholars Program on students doing these long-term projects. Students in the second year of the program do what's called a changemaker project. And so they choose a sustainable development goal that they care about, they use the design thinking process to conduct empathy interviews and brainstorm, develop prototypes, get feedback, and to develop sort of their plan on how to address it. They actually participate in a competition that includes students from around the world, and they compete for funding for their action plan. And then whatever funding they're awarded, they can use in the spring to implement their action plan. And then there's another follow-up competition in the spring where students then compete for recognition on what they achieved. And so we've participated in the changemaker project for two years, and so far, we've won two of the competitions. So we're pretty proud of that. We had a student, Cynthia Han, our first year, who was interest, really, she, she looked at the rise of anti-Asian hate and violence in our community in the wake particularly of the COVID pandemic. And she wrote a children's book from her vantage point of being an Asian student in a white majority community, and what that was like, and, you know, how did she found her own identity. She wrote a children's book, and through her funding, she was able to publish, I believe it was over 200 copies of her book, and have it distributed to local libraries and schools. So she was our winner the first year.
Did we have a copy?
Yeah, in a way. I have it in my bag too.
I'll go get it.
Yeah, I brought it because I thought someone might ask. And then our second year, we had a group called the Pleasant Politics Party, and they were disturbed by polarization, our political environment. And so what they did was they developed a series of lesson plans and activities to do with middle school students. So they would learn the skills of talking to somebody that you disagree with. And they worked with a variety of experts, and they had a mentor who sort of helped them through the process. They implemented the lessons at HCC, but they also published them on a website and then shared them with social studies leaders throughout the community. And so they were our winners for the second year. And so, you know, we were super proud of that. And there's tons of other great ones too, but those are just the ones in one group. Yeah, yeah.
We're so, we're so well into the way you teach social studies, where you explore the different sides of an argument.
You know, on that front, are you able to, in classrooms, what's appropriate, talk about current events?
Yes. Yeah, and you know what? I think it's so important to do it, although I understand teachers are nervous to do it. But one of the things you really have to do is be prepared. You can't just say, hey, let's talk about what's, you know, what's going on. You have to really, again, have sources. You have to have students read something, look at a source, when they want to talk about something, they have something to point to. I think it's critical. I mean, one of the focuses that we've had too is framing our lessons and units around current events. So if you're looking at something in the past, what's the relevant current event that aligns with that? And then students understand the relevance, you know, sort of of the history. But yes, I think you have to. But again, you have to be prepared.
Jen, your teachers and you worked with the English department with Mr. Joyce, then English chairperson, and trained on how to have difficult conversations.
Yeah.
The way to structure those through a framework.
Yeah, we worked with an organization called the Better Arguments Project. And their sort of philosophy was that it's not, we, it's not that the arguments are the problem, it's we need to have better arguments. And some of the foundational ideas they, they, you know, talked about was listen to learn. You know, really, when you're, when you're engaging with someone, you want to learn about their perspective rather than argue yours. A second one, they say, is take winning off the table. You know, which is, it's just an easy, but if you really want to engage in a conversation where you're learning someone else's perspective, don't worry about winning, worry about understanding. And so, you know, those are some of the things that we're sort of integrating. You know, not that, that having a debate is not a good thing, sometimes it is, and we should practice those skills too. But really, the skill of understanding and asking questions and leaving a conversation more informed about how other people think is really probably where we really need to be spending a lot of time. So we, so we do that as well.
Jen, what strikes me about the work that you're doing, and the examples you're showing of student work, is how deliberate and intentional you and the faculty have been around the curriculum.
Yeah.
Being very careful to, this is our intent, and how do we deliberately design activities and units to reach the outcome we desire? And can you talk a bit about the process with your department? Because you use the term "we" a lot, so I know you're working collaboratively with all of your teachers, 6 through 12, to do this work.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really, it is spending, I think that it's critical, spending that time, 6 to 12, even though we don't do it every month, but we do it multiple times per year, is really spending time thinking about and identifying the importance of the work, the value of the work, and then making sure that we all understand what's going on in the different grade levels. Teachers actually love that, when they learn, you know, what the work looks like in 6th grade versus 11th grade, you know, versus 9th grade, so that they really see that they're part of a larger system. And that really makes you understand the importance of the work. So it's not about me, it's my classroom, my teacher, it's about, you know, our work as a 6 to 12 sort of vertical system. I think that's important.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, and then I, oh, this is, this is just some examples of students who actually earned the seal. So to date, we have 24 students who have officially earned the seal. But again, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the year where more students can apply, so I'd imagine that number would, would go up quite a bit. This was in our district newsletter, they interviewed two students who had earned the seal at the first go-round, so that early September day. And one of the students, John, who I believe was one of the students you honored tonight, he, a lot of the focus of his work is he helped to really start a unified sports program. And so he spoke about how, and wrote about how meaningful that was to him, and that was like, really a life-changing opportunity for him to begin a program like that, you know, in our school. And then Ally Waxman was the other student, and she was part of that Pleasant Politics Party that we mentioned before. And really, you know, becoming just aware of the importance of being an engaged citizen and taking those, you know, that responsibility seriously. So those are a couple of our students. And then, you know, kind of what's next? So the work continues. The biggest thing is to always think about developing units and lessons that target our focus. So we're obviously still working on that historical thinking, but now being more explicit, as we said, about civic readiness, identifying it, where does it live in the curriculum, mapping, analyzing that approach. We'd also like to develop curriculum for a course that would be a 12th grade course, so in addition to the AP courses that we already offer. This would be a course that would combine economics and government together in a year-long course, to sort of integrate them more purposely. But then also, we would offer an opportunity for those students to do a capstone project. And so they would have an opportunity to earn those four points toward the seal. So we thought that's, that's something we want to look towards.
So these would be kids who did not participate in global scholars?
Right. I mean, they could too, it could be the same kids, but they, you know, it would be a different capstone project.
So they could do both?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And, and then really, we want to track our student progress. So, you know, how are we collecting data, whether it's survey data or student work? Are we looking at how students are sort of improving over time? So those are kind of the things top of mind.
Is the 12th grade potential new course instead of something?
Well, current, yeah, well, sort of. Like currently, we offer economics as a semester, and then a couple of different electives.
Got it.
But we don't really have a great focus on government. We could take AP Government. It's integrated in some of our other AP courses, but on a more sort of the Regents level, there's not a strong government focus. So we feel that that's something that we should integrate more formally into the curriculum.
Got it.
Could that also be an elective level group to let people enter, or could we have that readiness, that seal readiness before?
Jen, can you repeat the question kind of?
Yeah, so the question was, could that be in 11th grade? I think that's a, this particular content is particularly required for 12th grade. It's one of the four years of social studies. Yeah. So it's, it's considered a required of our four-year sequence. So that would probably be in 12th grade. Yeah. But there would be other opportunities for kids to earn capstone projects that we're going to, you know, explore. But in reality is, you don't have to do a capstone project to earn the seal. You know, if, if you do the capstone project, you're definitely going to earn the seal. But we had lots of kids who earned the seal without it, because there's lots of ways to get to that six points.
Jen, your work is, is amazing.
I am too.
I also just want to point out that Jen presented at a regional conference recently, or a national conference?
Uh, just region.
Regional conference.
Don't oversell it.
But your topic was about connecting historical events with modern society.
Yeah.
Can you just talk a moment about what you were communicating in that?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm teaching 10th grade for the first time in, in a while. So one of the things is, what's great about being a department chairperson is that you're in the classroom. So as you're leading the work, you also have to implement the work and reflect on the work. So I'm back in Global 10, I have a co-talk class with my colleague Wes Cutler. And so our focus this year is framing every unit around a modern sort of global issue. And again, that's been the work of the Social Studies Department. So we look at, for example, when we're studying the French Revolution, we're looking at examples of protests going on in the world today. When we're looking at industrialization, we're looking at how some of the issues that came out of industrialization still impact our world today. So we want the students to see that. When you're studying history, you're really getting a sense of understanding, you know, why things are the way they are today. So that's kind of framing our work.
That's terrific. And thanks for giving our students this opportunity to dive deep into these events. And also, it was a goal of the departments for about 10 years. I think when you first arrived at Byron Hills, we talked about ways to increase our students' exposure to current events. We felt that was one area we always heard back from our graduates was a weakness in our curriculum. And I don't think we hear that anymore.
Yeah.
I can see it throughout the examples you've shown. In every example, you seem to be engaging them in authentic tasks, which is good, and it's always connected to real work. So thank you for taking that charge seriously and doing things that were really embedded into our curriculum, not just superficial attempts, really making it the core of the Social Studies Department.
That's great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Any other questions about social studies?
Thank you, Jen. Fantastic. Okay, I'm going to get, I'm going to get in the book, it's right there. And then just give it...
Great. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay. So we are moving on to unfinished business. We have a review of policies, second read, 5100, on comprehensive attendance, 4850, animals in the schools, 4322, programs for advanced learners, and then first read, 2210, board org meetings, 4772, graduation ceremonies, and 6710, purchasing authority. Can I have a motion? Second? Ball of favor? Anybody have any comments on the policies, questions? Thank you to the policy committee. Thank you, Tim and Gina. Will you work with the policy committee? New business. 12.1, two items. Staff reports. Superintendent?
All right. Will you have a clicker for me, Tim?
Yeah.
Oh, I have it. Yeah. Thank you. So for anyone who's tuning in tonight, and who didn't have the opportunity to see any of our prior board meetings, I thought it was important to just spend a few minutes talking about our proposal for lights, learning, and action. I want to have every opportunity to share this with the public that we can. This is a proposed three-phase project, which will include the Learning Commons, the re-renovation of the high school library and the lecture hall, phase two, a second turf field at the high school, and phase three, lights on the field. to take a look at the footprint, the pink being the library, the blue being the lecture hall on the upper right, creating a center hallway with a kiosk in it, and just really redesigning those learning spaces, both in the library and in the lecture hall, to meet our, our students' needs for learning. Large spaces and small spaces, demountable walls, state-of-the-art technology. I've shown pictures in the past of what the current situation is in our library. And the high school library is the only library not to be renovated yet in the district. So there are some renderings. We are really looking forward to some nights in the spring where we are going to invite people from the community to come in and do sort of a virtual walkthrough of that space. And we, as part of that process, here is the outdoor learning space attached to the library, the lecture hall. A timeline for us to do this work. Here will be the second turf field, and then field and court-directed lighting. And in May, you will see a proposition during the budget vote asking the community to authorize the district to take money out of the Capital Reserve Fund, which is a fund that has been set up for purposes like this, to do large capital projects and not go out to a bond. And we have to ask the community to vote on whether or not the district can use those funds for the proposed projects. So this is what the proposition will look like. I just want to go through that each time, just in case people are tuning in that had not been here before. Now, my favorite time of the day, other than actually having students physically here so that we can, can talk about them and, and show some of the work that they're doing. We really have, we have quite a few student highlights going on tonight. In addition to our guests, we have our athletes, our D1 athletes, who were signed to their D1 schools. Congratulations to Anastasia Burns and Elsa Rolfs. They had their D1 letters of intent to play sports. And Anastasia will play lacrosse for American University. Elsa will be rowing for the University of Wisconsin-Madison. So congratulations to them. That was such a fun event. The next one we have is our student leaders making headlines with their club initiatives. Now, this did happen over Halloween, but, you know, I, I know we may not be timely, but it doesn't mean I don't want to recognize our students for the work that they're doing. This is a junior, Harley Rappaport. She was on News 12. She did the Teal Pumpkin Project, which is promoting food allergy awareness and creating safe Halloween experiences for children with dietary restrictions. And that means that anyone who has safe Halloween candy puts a teal pumpkin in front of their houses. And she was featured on News 12 for that, which was pretty amazing. And I think.
Put the video up?
Yeah, thanks. I'm afraid to press anything and turn it on.
Trick or treat, but food allergies can certainly cause some concern here. Our Nadia Galindo tells us about a group in Armaque that's working to make this more inclusive.
Halloween trick-or-treating preparations are underway in Armaque. But this pile of donated treats does not include candy.
I know Halloween for me was one of my favorite holidays as a child. So it makes me really upset that so many kids can't enjoy it.
After developing dietary restrictions towards dairy and gluten, Harley Rappaport launched the Food Allergy Awareness Club at Byram Hills High School.
It's important that people understand what people with allergies are going through.
Club is helping collect non-food items at Pullaham Lawrence in Armaque that will be packaged and given to homeowners in designated food allergy safe zones in town to be passed out this Halloween. It's part of the Teal Pumpkin Project, which Michelle Isben helped launch in Armaque eight years ago as a mother of a child with severe peanut allergies.
It could be deadly for her.
Teal pumpkins placed outside of home is indicated to safe stop for kids with food allergies and dietary restrictions.
My goal is to get other, other communities to not only do teal pumpkins at their house, but also the community. So if there is a street or a Halloween zone, get the community to do a collection so that the child cannot skip houses.
You can drop off any donations here at Pullaham Lawrence in Armaque through Sunday. And just a reminder, they're not accepting food or candy items. Instead, organizers are recommending small Halloween toys.
That's good, Tim.
For day nights, like stickers and stamps. In Armaque, not even like that.
Pretty amazing. And then also, student leaders making headlines. Oh, that's me. We have our junior Zoe Harris, who was featured in the inside press for her leadership in the Do Something Club last year. And, well, she started last year, initiated it. But she has been doing things like Bubble Break and Mirror Message, addressing mental health, environmentally friendly oriented initiatives like Unplug It. And the complete article is there too. That happens to be an older picture of her doing her jeans drive. Just fabulous. We also have another student leader in, in the headlines, Making a Difference. We have two, Maddie Testa and Sydney Doric, who launched Connecting Generations Club. This is so wonderful. They were also featured by News 12, leading volunteers in delivering Thanksgiving meals and spending quality time with older adults. Go ahead, Tim.
Doric Westchester is a nonprofit dedicated to fighting loneliness among adults. And today, they're hosting their third annual intergenerational Thanksgiving meal delivery event. Please Charles J. Mack has them.
Staff members and volunteers from Deru alongside students from Byram Hill High School are delivering these packages to older adults in Westchester today that are filled with traditional Thanksgiving and holiday items.
So turkey and potatoes and gravy and vegetables. There's a holly roll, there's a beautiful little turkey-shaped cookie. However, the act of service doesn't end once a volunteer drops back off.
After the delivery, many volunteers are also spending about an hour at each person's home to get to know them better and foster more intergenerational friendships.
That is really what is sort of the hallmark of Deru is bringing the generations together. It's actually what our name stands for, Deruish Generations in Hebrew. And so we have volunteers all the way from five years old to 100.
Patricia Valant is one of over 70 people volunteering at today's event.
You know, the holiday times, and especially since COVID, all the social isolation, what's been coming out is that it's affecting people's mental health. It's actually been.
Yep. And then, next, we have our, oops, I got it. I got it. I'm going. Okay. And, and, you know, on the heels of Jen Leaden being here tonight and everything that they've been doing in Global Scholars, you know, one of the spinoffs of that, we also have sustainability initiatives at the high school. So not only are kids learning of this in their Global Scholars class, but we actually have initiatives going on. And along with the PTSA Sustainability Team, they went to Coleman Hill for a community meeting, and they started talking to students about topics like recycling and composting. And these are the same kids who eventually, by the time they go to Wampus, become the recycling ambassadors, where they carry out that recycling program themselves. So just pretty cool what our kids are, are doing. And these, these particular groups, I mean, this is, they're not doing this for any kind of recognition. These are just people who are going out with humanitarian efforts, which I think is, is pretty amazing. Next, we have some fun in Byram Hills. We had the Varley Players presenting Little Women. We went to that production. It was absolutely outstanding. So congratulations to our students in Varley Players. We also have our NIVSMA participants, Morgan Hecht and, we saw him tonight, Aaron Letts. They performed in the prestigious All-State Winter Conference at Eastman Theater and also University of Rochester. And Morgan, who's an alto, sang in the All-State Mix Chorus. And Aaron, who's a trombonist, played with the All-State Symphonic Band. And that is a big deal. Congratulations to them. We also have speech and debate updates. Valentina Moreno and Aiden Aldea Lustig, they had quite a bit of accomplishments here. On November 11th, Valentina competed in the Magnum Opus International Speech and Drama Winner Circle Tournament at Carnegie Hall in New York City. She won the Dramatic Interpretation Division of the Event, a first for a Byram Hills student. And Aiden finished first in the Original Oratory at the Villager Invitational, which was held in November at St. Joseph University in Philadelphia. Pretty outstanding. We also have additional speech and debate updates. On December 8th, 31 members of speech and debate competed across two different tournaments. And they led the way with a fourth-place finish at Summit Hill Topper Holiday Classic. We had Aiden, Emma Nagura, Valentina Moreno, India Edwards, Aiden Shamas, Avni Sundaram, Arnie Saxena, and Avni Sundaram again, all reaching different first to sixth place positions, whether in declamation speech or dramatic interpretation or original oratory. And also in the semifinals in abruptu speech. So congratulations to these students. I mean, what these kids do in one month since I've seen you last. And now, we have two Bobcats of the season. We've had the pleasure of following this volleyball team all the way up to, up to the state semifinals. And here, Tim, if you can get on that, that's Nicolette Vitaj. And Tim, you might want to take the microphone out and put it closer because I'm not sure how well we can hear it. Thanks.
We'll get it in post.
Oh, perfect. Go ahead.
It's okay.
I just want to say how honored I am to have been selected as captain for this team. And getting to lead aside my cousin and co-captain Alana, who's just like one of the most competitive and driven people and players over me, was so amazing. Coming into this season, I knew that we had a really talented group of girls. And as captain, it was my job to make sure that we value together and execute as much, we should say. As a leader, of course, you know, it's the traits that you want your teammates demonstrate on the court. You need to have the best attitude, show up to practice first, have drive, have hustle, all that. But at the same time, they need to know that everything you're doing is for them. And that's how we really look at why this is. Being chosen for this is such an honor, especially when you consider the success that Byron Athletics saw this fall season. And just knowing that there's so many other outstanding athletes in the school. So representing the female players this season is, it's really, it's rewarding.
Amazing. And her words are everything we would hope to find in a high school student. There you go. That's great. And next, we have Billy Gillespie of Boys Varsity Soccer. Bobcat.
Leadership is not only on the field. You guide younger people on your team, other people, and kind of make vice. Doing the good things. Means a lot to me. It's obviously a really big achievement. But it kind of shows like the hard work and the dedication, not only me, but the team put in, how we were able to do so good. Us staying in the hotel for the state championship, it's stayed with me forever. It's a thing not many teams are able to do. Since we got so far, we were able to experience a win, semifinal win in overtime at, in a hotel, a bunch of my friends, just a great time. It didn't really only just start in high school. I've been playing with these kids since ASO days, the Casper. And we were able to play one last year. It was amazing to get to the state championship, win a section, win a regional title. It's unbelievable. It's what we wanted since the start.
That's awesome. Congratulations to both of our Bobcats of the season. All right. Teacher in the spotlight, Amy Minashe. Amy, as you know, is an art teacher here at the high school. And she submitted her work to the National Art Education Association, ArchO. This is a very distinguished event to be, to have your artwork accepted into this ArchO. It is very prestigious. And we want to congratulate Amy and also thank her for being an art teacher who practices her craft, which is pretty spectacular. I, I was a frequent flyer in a lot of her classes over the years. And last but not least, we have an alumni spotlight. I've never done that before, but I want to give a shout out to Byram Hills alumni Sammy Canold. She's continuing to make headlines on Broadway. She's been written about in the New York Times, Forbes Magazine, Washington Post, Broadway World, and more. She went out to Stanford University for her bachelor's, and she went to Harvard for her master's. And she is the director, a long, she's a director of a play that I went to see in the city called How to Dance in Ohio. And it is how, how they navigate challenges, the, the actors. They're a neurodiverse cast. And it is about seven autistic youths. And all seven actors are on the autism spectrum themselves. And one of them, Ashley Wool, is also, was a student in Westchester, and she plays one of the lead roles in that as well. It was phenomenal to go there. And when I was emailing back and forth with Sammy, she thanked Byram Hills for investing so much in the arts because that's what inspired her to move forward. So I have to tell anyone who wants to go see How to Dance in Ohio, it was brilliant. And it's not just because Sammy was directing it. But congratulations to Sammy and inspiration for our Bobcats. And that is all I have.
Tim? Tim? Gina Kelly? Any board reports? Okay. Communications to the board? Okay, so we're going to move on to approval of the board minutes. 16.1. We'll separate them because we have some abstentions. Approval of Board of Education minutes from November 7th. That's the one Lori and I were, were absent from. You were at that one. So motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor? Two abstentions. And now a motion to approve. Oh, is that that? No, that was it. That was the last one. Okay, so motion to adjourn. You were there?
Lara was there. I wasn't there.
You were at that one.
I'm not at stake.
It was Lara. That was best.
Still some abstentions.
Lara's abstent, it's stating, not Lori. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you to our students and their parents who came to be celebrated tonight.